Okay, good afternoon. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, October 7th, 2025. It's 2:02 PM. My name is Ty Metzer, Chair of the Board. To my right, Vice Chair, Commissioner Wayne Fournier, Commissioner Carolina Mihia. To my left, Commissioner Emily Klaus and Commissioner Rachel Grant on Zoom. County Manager Leonard Hernandez, Assistant County Manager Dolph Tony, Assistant County Manager Jennifer Walker and Clerk of the Board Amy Davis. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I will lead us, so if you would stand and talk.
Pledge of Allegiance, to the land, to the nation, to America. To the people of our country, for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, that being the God of all.
We'd also like to start today with a land acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge and thank the Indigenous Salish peoples whose elders and ancestors have lived on and stewarded the lands and waterways for this county with great care and who continue as sovereign nations today, specifically the Squaxin, Musquali, and Chehalis people. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connect across all barriers of heritage and indifference. Purpose of this acknowledgement is to disrupt ongoing erasure of injustices done and to remember history as a stepping stone towards healing. We commit to working together to honor our past and build our future with truth. Sir, next up is approval of the agenda. There's a proposed motion regarding Consent Item 3, an amendment. I move to remove Consent Item 3, resolution of findings and determinations for the Long Lake Management District Number 25 from the consent agenda and add it to department items.
Second.
Motion in second to remove Consent Item 3 and move it to department item. Any discussion on that motion? Offer the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion about to approve the amended agenda? I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion in second to approve the amended agenda. Any discussion? Offer the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Here's. Next up is presentations and this month, or this meeting, we have a proclamation for National Arts and Humanities Month. Introduce every item.
Great, thank you Chair. Good afternoon, Board. Yes, today the proclamation is for National Arts and Humanities Month. These are the disciplines that help us understand who we are, where we've come from, and how we see the world and each other. It's through music, literature, history, philosophy, visual arts, and beyond that the arts and humanities inspire creativity and enrich Thurston County. We have four speakers today that encompass this array of topics. And first, I would like to invite up Hillary Tully of the Arbutus Folk School.
Thank you. My name is Hillary Tully. I'm the Executive Director at Arbutus Folk School.
My name?
Yes, you are. Last year, I found out that Arbutus Folk School is the only urban folk school in the, in North America. And so Thurston County is really lucky in that sense that we have a place in our community that's so unique. Raise your hand if you're familiar with Arbutus Folk School. Okay, so many people are coming to take classes. Most of the classes are in ceramics, woodworking, fiber arts, many other crafts. This means that residents and visitors to the county are enjoying hands-on experiences, creating something, expressing their creativity, and learning something new. But also, there's another part of it, which is having people come and sit together and do something together who never met before. And that's perhaps the most powerful part of what we're doing in our community. And it's something that people speak to us about again and again. And I think that's been a really important part of our community since reopening from COVID. I was just looking at some numbers. We went from like 200 to 800 participants in just a few years reopening from COVID. And I think that the best testament to how important arts and culture have been for our community is some quotes from participants. So a scholarship student shared, "It is my happy place in my week, a lovely group of people, and one of the kindest instructors I've met." A military family shared, "My daughter had an amazing experience and has been enthusiastically sharing her joy with friends at school ever since." Another student shared, "Being able to attend a ceramics class was eye-opening to my creative needs and gave me a sense of community. Ceramics class became my calm, reset day." Another scholarship student shared, "This scholarship not only helped me gain skills for my small family business, but also is proving to be a wonderful tool for my mental health." And finally, a participant shared, or a parent of a participant shared, "This class gave my daughter the confidence boost she needed and helped her find a joy for woodworking. She loved creating something different or practical and continues to talk about what she learned in class." Well, thank you.
Thank you so much, Hillary. Next, I'd like to invite up Jill Barnes, who is with the Washington Center and has a short presentation for us today.
Thank you. Thanks, Commissioners and staff and engaged citizens for having October be proclaiming that October is Arts and Humanities Month. I, we can switch to the next one straight away. We've got an image here. And this photo is from a sold-out show when we had Los Lobos in a couple of years ago. But it's more than a concert photo. It's a snapshot of a thriving cultural ecosystem. Thurston County is home to several performing arts venues or spaces that are activated for performing arts, and each contributes in its own way to the vibrancy of our region. The Washington Center stands out as a fully professional theater, one that puts local artists on stage as a fully equipped theater. We put local artists on stage. We support community organizations, and we bring international talent to our doorstep as well. We're proud to be home to over a dozen local arts and community organizations and a destination for residents and visitors who are seeking meaningful arts, culture, and humanities experiences. And honestly, we're really fortunate to live in a community with such a dynamic array of quality arts organizations, visual arts, performing arts. It's really, it's really something extraordinary for a community our size. These groups all bring stories, music, movement, and meaning to our stages, and we're really honored to be able to support them. Go to the next slide. And really, the arts and humanities aren't a luxury. They're how societies remember, how we adapt and how we innovate. And arts organizations are part of civic infrastructure. We help advance civic engagement, cultural connections, bridging communities, and long-term resilience. I want to give an example. We have a unique partnership with Indigenous Performance Productions. They launched their first creative development residency with a show called Welcome to Indian Country several years ago in our community on our stage at the Washington Center. That has blossomed into a significant partnership. Together, we have co-produced six Indigenous-led performances, with the seventh coming in January of '26. These works span storytelling, theater, music, dance, and multidisciplinary art. They're developed with care and intention, right here in Thurston County. And what's really cool is they, we host the world premiere, and then they go off and they tour around the country and potentially around the world. It's not just a partnership. It's a movement toward equity, representation, community connections, and cultural celebration. What we've also done, we also are in a unique position to host other opportunities. For example, we hosted a webinar on free speech in connection with a show that we had last June about Lenny Bruce. And we were even able to offer continuing legal education credit in association with that webinar. We've hosted bilingual student shows that have really been wonderful to, to be the adults in the room and to watch what's happening and to see students beam with pride as their language and their culture from their home is celebrated in front of their peers. And that's just to name a couple. And moving on to other arts education facts, thanks. Through our programming and that of our artistic partners, we serve over 25,000 students annually. These experiences help shape minds, build confidence, prepare young people to navigate a complex world with imagination and compassion. Arts education isn't really just about the performance. It's about the process, the rehearsals, being part of a team and building together. It's about being vulnerable and preparing students for life. Here's some examples. Theater, what a great opportunity to teach history and civic lessons and bring dramatized pivotal moments in, in history. It can also help build public speaking skills or teamwork. Music can help strengthen discipline and problem-solving. Dance can foster physical awareness, emotional expression, nonverbal communication. And visual arts can really teach you to look at the world differently around you, notice symbols, and explore cultural perspectives, again, just to name a few. And all of these skills are really essential for thriving in today's interconnected world. But also, let's go to the next slide. It's well documented that arts tourists spend twice as much as their local counterparts. And we've seen it firsthand. This spring, we did a survey to survey our patrons who we had contact information for, who traveled more than 50 miles to attend, and the results were clear. Almost 86% said the center was their primary reason for travel. 63% stayed overnight. 36% stayed and paid accommodations, and almost 82 visited local restaurants and businesses. So the arts and tourism can be a real great economic driver as well. In fact, we welcome guests from 35 Washington State Counties, 40 states, and three countries. And it's not just the patrons. This past August, we hosted the Book of Mormon Broadway Tour. They came for two sold-out nights. The cast and crew booked 55 hotel rooms, many for three, three nights. So arts and tourism really do complement each other and go hand in hand. And this upcoming season, we have a huge range of genres that we present. In fact, this Thursday, we have The Capital Fools performing. They put on a truly bipartisan roast, holding up a mirror so that we can all laugh at ourselves instead of just laughing at other people. But from Broadway tours to comedy, celebrated authors, photographers, dance companies, musicians, family events, we truly have something for everyone. I like to say not everything is for everyone, and that's okay too, but we have something for everyone. Our programming reflects the richness of human expression. It's a celebration of diversity and imagination and shared experiences. I like to say that we're also in the business of making memories. And we do that in connection with, the last slide, with our artistic partners. We collaborate with dozens of organizations and community partners. Again, they bring their voices and visions and vitality to our stage and community. Supporting the arts and humanities is an investment in our social fabric. So I really do appreciate the support that you've provided, the center and the arts in general, and for acknowledging the role of the arts and humanities during this month. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. And next, I'd like to invite it to the podium Jenny Hall, who is a board member on Tenino Arts and, and Tenino are Young at Art Theater.
Hi there. I'm Jenny Hall, and I first want to say thank you so much for recognizing the arts and the humanities. It is such an important part, especially in the Northwest. I think that we just appreciate it that much more than other people do. So Tenino Arts started in, in the middle of the pandemic when artisans had no place to sell their wares or show anything. And a couple of artists started setting up the tents in a parking lot downtown in Tenino. And it grew through the summer. By September, with the help of George Sharp and the EDC and the STEAD program, we set up downtown for a little street fair. And then in November, we opened up in a vacant building because there were, they couldn't have any rent because there couldn't be any events. And we did six weekends of three-day artisan markets. The artists were not there. We worked a partnership with the Chamber of Commerce to minimize the people that were in there and to follow, you know, all COVID protocols. But that launched Tenino Arts becoming a nonprofit. And since then, we have continued to host artisan markets. There are juried fairs. We welcome all skill levels to apply. We've, we've had people that it's their very first market. We've had others that have been very experienced, you know, for decades. And it's been a growing collaborative environment. And so we are continuing, we do a holiday market Thanksgiving weekend in the Kodiak Room downtown Tenino. And then we do a spring market. And then in the summer, we open up back in the, in the streets in front of the stone carvers, which is a very historic entity in, in Tenino. And we just, we've heard from many of our artists that we, we have been the training wheels to launch full-on careers. The artists getting to know some of the other artists, they've, they've just stated how invaluable, you know, the training and how we push them to be better and better and show their best. And so Tenino Arts is, is thriving down in Tenino. And then I'm also, I actually was, became involved in Tenino through the Tenino Young at Heart Theater. And my children were involved in the theater, you know, in high school. And I, as a parent, I just saw what the effect was on their life and how it helped them through difficult times of growing up, building confidence, creating friendships. And it made such an impact on me that I joined the board, was asked to join the board, and I've been on the board for over 10 years now. Tenino Young at Heart Theater was founded by the Mackenzie Sullivan family back in early 1990, where Bob was helping his kids, you know, do plays for the neighborhood. And then the adults in the neighborhood wanted to join. And so it grew and grew over the, this last 30 years. This last summer, the musical, it's a summer musical performed at the high school because we don't have a home yet. And they did Little Mermaid, and we had a cast of nearly 50 people in the cast. There, we do live music, so it's always a live pit. We had 13 musicians. We, I'm sure with all the, the props and the costuming and the volunteers, I'm sure we had over 80 people involved in just a small summer production. And then we, yeah, those are lifelong commitment relationships that we build. We do what's called Reader's Theater, and those, we've got three of those scheduled this year. Those are planned. They're free for the community. There's no ticketing. It's, I mean, they don't, we accept donations, but it's free for the community to attend and to participate in. It's a chance for people who have just to dip their toe into the world of acting. It's a script-in-hand performance. They've just rehearsed a few times and then perform. It also is an opportunity for people to try their hand at directing. So it's, it's meant to be an educational opportunity, you know, for anyone around the county or as far as they want to drive to participate. It's a very inclusive, open organization that makes everyone feel like they're part of the family. And I just love Tenino. Thank you very much for what you have done, your support for the communities.
Thank you, Jenny. And lastly, I would like to invite up Rob Kirkwood, who is part of the Thurston County Historic Commission.
Hello. Thank you for listening today. I've got a paragraph here that describes the benefits of historic preservation to the community, all generated by AI, so we can skip that and just say that historic preservation is good for our community. I can start with, we, we've got seven members right now. Excuse me. This is Chris Hoffman. He's our chair. This is a kiosk that we built over the last two or three years. It's been a combined effort. We actually prefabbed, volunteer carpenters prefabbed it out at the fairground. And then we moved it over to the rack and had contractors install the roof. And then the, the panels themselves were generated by our staff. The Musqualis generated their own panel. Lacy generated their own panel. The county staff edited the panel, so to speak. And of course, Sonia and Dana kind of chaperoned the whole operation. And at the same, now, our next endeavor along, well, along the kiosk lines, Tenino has a kiosk that needs some help, so we're going to go down to Tenino and over the next two or three years again, probably pull the same trick. Another program that we started was the bronze historic markers. We started one out at the Yum Cemetery. This is the one that we proposed, but to put in front of Heritage Hall at the fairgrounds. And the fun story here is that for a long time, I think Mr. Walker got the credit for donating the property and the logs for the Heritage Hall. It actually turns out it was Ms. Ms. Ridswell? Is that what it said?
From Richmond.
So that's kind of a fun story. We'll go to the next one. This is a, the Brew House Trailer, the Old Brew House Foundation built this with Heritage Grants 10 years ago now. And then COVID came along and kind of knocked the wind out of the sails for Old Brew House Foundation. So we are combining efforts between the Old Brew House Foundation and the Historic Commission to take this around to community events. The right side of the trailer is, is about the Old Brew House and brewery. And the left side of the trailer is Thurston County's smallest history museum, and actually the only history museum. So the idea behind that is to trying to tie all the other museums together. We offer information on all the other museums in the county. We also have been working on Historic Register this, last year with a grant from Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation. We updated the files on 30 out of the 55 historic registers that we have, registered buildings that we have in Thurston County. And we also did Heritage Day this year. I think it's our fifth or sixth one. Trying to give an opportunity for our, actually our Heritage Grant recipients to get together and find out what the other groups are doing. This year, we acknowledged Jennifer Crooks as a author, contributor, historic preservation type person for our county. Our Heritage Grant Program, of course, got put on hold this year. And I think it's been, I've been with the Historic Commission for a long time. And the staff support from Sonia and outreach and education, the GIS people did the map for the kiosk. The staff support's just been really great, and we really appreciate that. So you got anything, Chris? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Rob and Chris, for being here. So Chair, out in the lobby, we have created some coloring sheets, Thurston County themed coloring sheets for Arts and Humanities Month. And there's a little QR code in the corner that has a link to the website where there are opportunities for anyone to get involved in arts and humanities in Thurston County. And so those are, will be available in the lobby for the whole month. And as well as some of the organizations today have brought pamphlets of opportunities to get involved with their organizations, and those will be available. And I wanted to point out that we can check out the artwork where the winners of the Thurston Art Contest have been hung and are in the lobby as well. So lots of wonderful arts and humanities around the atrium and Thurston County. So Chair, I'll turn it back over to you.
We're going to read the proclamation. Take their photos?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thurston County Proclamation for National Arts and Humanities Month. Whereas the arts and humanities enhance and enrich the lives of every Washingtonian, providing meaningful ways to understand our history, express our identities, and connect across cultures and communities. And whereas artists, scholars, cultural organizations, libraries, museums, historical societies, and educators across Thurston County make invaluable contributions to the civic, educational, and economic vitality of our state. And whereas the arts and humanities foster creativity, critical thinking, empathy, and lifelong learning skills, essential to a thriving democracy and to an innovative, resilient workforce. And whereas the arts and culture industry also strengthens our economy by generating local economic activity and creation of local jobs. Whereas National Arts and Humanities Month, celebrated each October, is a time to recognize and honor the creative spirit and the enduring impact of cultural expression on our state, county, and nation. And whereas Thurston County is proud to support the work of organizations and countless community partners who champion access to the arts and humanities for all, now therefore be it resolved, the Board of County Commissioners hereby proclaims October as National Arts and Humanities Month and encourages all residents to explore and participate in the many activities available in Thurston County, adopted on the 7th day of October by the Board of Thurston County Commissioners. 28, we'll be in recess till 2:45. So head on out to the stairs and take a picture? It's 2:44. We are back on record in the County Commissioners meeting for October 7th. And next up is public comment for items related to the agenda. I didn't have any sign up on that. So we'll, if I don't see anybody, I will move to County Manager's update.
I have nothing to report.
Okay, Consent Items 1 through 4. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? I move to approve the consent agenda as presented with Items 1 through 4.
Second.
Motion in second to approve Consent Items 1 through 4. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. And that brings us to department item 6, Central Services, contract award for Israel Road Building Remodel.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Tony Shaw. I'm a capital project manager with Central Services, and I'm here on behalf of Central Services. We are requesting approval to award the contract for renovations of the building located at 1111 Israel Road Southwest in Tumwater to Construct Inc., of Tumwater, Washington, and to authorize the Director of Central Services to execute the contract and any amendments that do not exceed 10%. A little background on this. On August 19th of 2025, the Board of County Commissioners approved a resolution calling for sealed bids for the renovation of this building. And on September 19th of 2025, we received four bids in response to advertisements that were posted in the Musquali Valley News and the Daily Journal of Commerce. And it was also posted on the Builders Exchange of Washington website. The low-responsive bid was received from Construct Inc. with the total bid amount of $1,609,800. This bid is approximately $800,000 below the original approved budgeted amount, so that's exciting. The renovation will include items such as the addition of Secured Evidence Storage Unit with a walk-in cooler, a large divisible Training Room, secure entry lobby, security film on exterior windows for critical operations, cleaning and painting of the exterior siding, and installation of a secured fence around certain parts of the parking area, and the installation of an emergency generator system. This project is in the 2025 through 2031 Capital Improvement Plan and is in alignment with the County Strategic Plan Initiative Number 16, which is to provide safe, secure, accessible, and functional facilities to effectively house county services and the associated workforce. We appreciate the clear direction from the Board on these matters and respectfully request approval for this item. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
What was that number again, Tony?
That number was $1,609,000 and, or $609,800.
How much was it below?
Approximately $800,000 if you include contingencies.
Yeah. Joe? Any other questions for Tony? Is there a motion? I move to approve the contract for renovations of the building located at 1111 Israel Road Southwest, Tumwater, Project Number C34401, to Construct Inc., of Tumwater, Washington, for a total of $1,609,800, and authorize the Director of Central Services to execute the contract and any amendments. contract and any amendments that do not exceed ten percent. Motion second to approve the contract for renovations to Construct Inc. of Tumwater, Washington. Any discussion on the motion? Just excited. Thank you. This is one more brick in the wall to get our, our capital planning correct and get our, you know, our financial future straight. Here, another discussion, call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I have a motion carries.
Thank you.
Next up is Item Seven, Public Works Contract Award for Stormwater Facility Cleaning Services. Tim Wilson to brief the board. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Again, for the record, Tim Wilson, Water Resources Manager with Public Works. This item is a request for the Board to approve a contract award for stormwater facility cleaning services to Olson Brothers Provac LLC of Kent, Washington, in the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and to authorize the Director of Public Works to execute the contract. This item was previously introduced on September thirtieth and is for the cleaning and maintenance of stormwater infrastructure to protect the assets and maintain regulatory compliance. Public Works received three proposals to the Board authorized RFP, and Provac was the highest rated proposal. This contract consists of a one-year base and four one-year renewal options. All contract expenditures would be funded by the Stormwater Utility Fund. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the Board may have.
Questions for Tim? Scene nine, ready for motion. I move to approve the contract award of the Stormwater Facility Cleaning Services to Olson Brothers Provac LLC of Kent, Washington, for the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and authorize the Director of Public Works to execute the contract and any amendments for up to ten percent additional contingency, seventy-five thousand, or a total of eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Motion second to approve contract award to Olson Brothers Provac, Kent, Washington.
Skip public comment?
No, there wasn't any. So we'll have another public comment period.
Okay. A constituent just reached out and asked why we didn't have public comment when they were on Zoom.
It was mentioned in the agenda. I reached out, and it'll be another opportunity. Okay, any other discussion on this motion? Call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
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 She carries. Thank you, Tim. Last Department Item is Public Health and Social Services Resolution of Findings and Determinations for Long Lake Management District Number Twenty-five.
Hi, Dr. Jen Freihight, Director of Thurston County Public Health and Social Services. This is a request for the Board to move to approve the resolution of findings and determinations for Long Lake Management District Number Twenty-five. Just as a recap, on September thirtieth, the Board of County Commissioners conducted a closed public hearing on the proposed resolution of findings and determinations, and determined the need for more time to evaluate the public comments that were received on the resolution of findings and determinations. It also called for the future public hearing on the proposed ordinance creating Thurston County Lake Management District Number Twenty-five for Long Lake, scheduled for November fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. The LMD has responded to the public comments as follows. Members of the LMD Steering Committee met with the City of Lacey, and after a productive meeting with the Parks and Recreation Director stated that she is in favor of the LMD moving forward, and she looks forward to participating on the Steering Committee in the future. The Steering Committee also reviewed the deed of the Cantor Grove Division Five HOA and confirmed that they do not have access to the lake, and they have been notified and are being removed from the assessment role. And the LMD stated that the Steering Committee representative for the Lake Forest Community does not align with the position of the commenter from the community, yet the LMD is open to discussing different ideas on how properties should be or could be charged within the LMD. So the next steps are that the ballots will be mailed out tomorrow, October eighth, and are due by five PM on October twenty-ninth to the Office of the Commissioners. The ballots will be counted on October thirtieth at ten thirty AM in the Rochester Room here at the atrium, and the ballot count is open to the public, and I'm able to answer any questions you may have.
No questions? Any questions for Dr. Freihight? I'm gonna take prerogative since I did kind of quickly announce public comment. I usually, I'm more deliberate about calling people out online. I did it, but I did it really quickly, and I know there's someone here on this item, and since we're about to take action, I'm gonna allow that person to give public comment. Mr. Booth, I think you are the one who popped off camera after we moved on. I know you want to speak as to this topic, so it makes sense to hear that now.
Okay.
Three minutes.
Thank you for making three minutes for me here to speak. I'll repeat some information. My name's Chad Booth. I'm a civil engineer specializing in stormwater management, water quality. I'm also a Thurston County Department of Health Certified Home Septic Tank Inspector. I live within the Long Lake Management District, which needs to have its current resolution revised. RCW thirty-six sixty-one-one-sixty states that the assessments may be calculated by front footage, acreage, the extent of improvements on the property, or any other factors that are deemed to fairly reflect special benefits. The RCW also states that multiple factors can be used, and that zones around the public improvement may be used to reflect different levels of benefit within each zone. Therefore, the Long Lake Management District Resolution has many levers to pull on while revising the resolution according to RCW and my suggested recommendations to be in compliance with RCW thirty-six sixty-one-one-sixty. The current resolution violates the RCW since fairness and special benefit is not evident according to all my various ways of dissecting the topic, which have been thoroughly shared. Also, fairness has not been demonstrated by the resolution's proponents since my concerns were initially raised eighteen days ago. Before giving verbal public comment at the County Commissioners' meeting on September thirtieth, I spoke with the LLMD Chair on September twentieth, and attended the LLMD Steering Committee on September twenty-fifth, voicing my concerns about the current tax structure in the resolution. Since giving verbal comment on September thirtieth, I've provided five detailed solutions for the resolution to the County Commissioners and to the LLMD Chair. The timing of my comments in the resolution came as soon as possible and may seem late in the game because outreach by the district and the county has been very limited or nonexistent. If Lake Forest's community-owned parcel was taxed like a publicly-owned park based on shoreline length, swimmer days, and boater days, my community members would pay twenty times less than the proposed resolution. If one hundred times more people and boats that could practically use the park did in fact use the park, my community members would still be paying five times too much based on this resolution. The proponents of the resolution continue to focus on how the district can tax based on pollutant loading, which is false and not properly estimated to date, that the timing of my comments is inconvenient, that this is the way it's always been done, and that my message isn't clear. Frankly, these are all poor excuses for not correcting a wrongdoing before it affects the property taxes of over nine hundred households for the next twenty years, let alone one that violates RCW. Thank you.
Mr. Booth, are you a, you're a Lake Forest resident? Is that correct?
I reside in Lake Forest. We have a community-owned parcel, and I don't speak for the HOA organization. I'm just speaking for the hundred and twenty petition signees.
Got it. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, anyone else on, that wanted to provide some public comment that I didn't call out online on the topic, this topic? Or a, or a department, well, this is the last agenda item. Okay. So then we're back to considering this item. We had a work session this morning, or a review of the, of the, of a comment and some of the responses. Are there other questions or comments from the Board? Motion and open it for debate. I move to approve the resolution of findings and determinations for Long Lake Management District Number Twenty-five. Second. I'll second the motion. We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution of findings and determinations for Long Lake Management District Twenty-five. Discussion on the motion, Commissioner Fornier.
I, I stand in favor of the motion. You know, I, I heard that, I, I think it was, this is a great example of how public hearings should work. We heard a lot of public comment, and there was some feedback, and it was, it was great of the Commission to then take some time to weigh those comments and then listen to staff, meet again with Representative for the Long Lake Management District. What I heard was that this, this Long Lake, the Long Lake Management District has existed as it sits for forty years. When these types of special districts are established, that sets up a framework with which we then can communicate with that group of constituents. In, you know, I'm hearing what the, the resident, Mr. Booth, has to say, and it, it sounds like, you know, he's got excellent comments, but in my mind, those comments are best taken to the Long Lake Management District Board. There are seats available on the Board. The Board came in and said that they would, you know, even after, or if this is passed, they would be willing to review the, the assessments as suggested, but we, we said in, you know, the, the county set up this governance structure so that the, the lake could kind of manage itself. The, you know, they heard from the other HOA, that, or we heard from the other HOA, where it said they did not have access to the lake, and the Long Lake Management District took that into consideration, and they're looking at now carving them out. So they're, in my mind, they're responsive to, you know, their own kind of constituent group. And, you know, and then we also heard that, you know, the resident that is, that is talking about this, this assessment doesn't necessarily speak on behalf of the entire HOA that is, that is being asked to, for further consideration. So, you know, we've been, we've been told that that HOA is in favor of this. So I think, you know, that group of constituents picks their representatives, they, they vote on their direction, and they, they've, you know, they've given that recommendation to us. So for those reasons, you know, I'm in favor of it, and I, I believe that the Long Lake Management District will probably be more than willing to work with Mr. Booth on his, on his, on his thoughts.
It was stated this morning, Dr. Freihight, that with respect to Lake Forest in particular, that there would, that rate, that this action by the Board doesn't set the rates in stone, and that can be something that's subject to further negotiation. Did I hear that correctly? Okay, Commissioner Claus?
I was just going to ask, I know this morning Commissioner Fornier requested, or like had a question about whether the HOA's position was in writing anywhere, and I was just wondering if there was any confirmation of that position since this morning.
They, they told it, they told me it was. They told me it's in their meeting minutes. They told me that they, I mean, you were there. They said that there were some emails. So do I, I don't have it in hand, but I, I really think if they were, if somebody was to come in and lie to the County Commissioners about there being some correspondence like that, there'd be a bigger issue than just this. So I, I will take them at their, at their word.
I have another question about the timing of this. If the Board didn't take the action that's being proposed today, would there be an impact on Long Lake Management District's ability to raise the funds? Are we on a timeline that's, would be affected?
There's a timeline that would be affected.
Thank you, Susan.
Good afternoon. Susan Long, Management District Director, Public Health and Social Services. So I just wanted to expand a little bit on the current timeline and what's happening. So today, if we were to approve the resolution, the mail, the ballots will be mailed tomorrow. They would be kind of at the end of the month. On the eleventh, on eleven-four, there's supposed to be a public hearing scheduled to implement the ordinance. That would be forming the district. After that public hearing, then we go and look at the role of assessments. So after that is when we determine exactly what the rates will be. And then that public hearing to set those rates is going to be scheduled for twelve-two. So there still is time to work and negotiate the rates with the various stakeholders.
But with the end of the year coming, there are certain thresholds that have to be met for to keep moving this forward.
Correct.
I didn't have a question, but I guess I was just going to, I said it this morning, but I'll say it again for the public that I have to abstain from this motion due to the fact that I abstained from it last, you know, at the public hearing, and it was because I was unsure if I had family members that lived within one of the HOAs that were being mentioned. And I confirmed that I do have some family members living in that, and so this time I just, I'm gonna be abstaining from any vote or accusing myself.
Any other discussion on the motion that's been made? Hearing none. I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, very good. That brings us to public comment related to general matters. Mr. Pettit, you're up.
My name is John Pettit. I live in East Olympia, and I know the rules. So here we go. You guys have a whole lot of work ahead of you. And one of the reasons why I'm bringing that up is because I have seen variety of information, like board decisions affecting deficits and such. You received a document here, and it project, so's a projected revenue of one hundred and twenty-four million, seven hundred. Well, some of your departments are funded also outside of general funds. In fact, if you want to look at, for instance, last year, your general revenue was more in the category, we'll call it a hundred and twenty million. And then the special revenue indicated a hundred and sixty-one million. Together. Now, some of these departments are using some of the revenues for it. It's not as simple as just saying, we're only counting this revenue over here for our budget purpose. Now, one of the things I want you to understand is, is that as Commissioners, surprisingly, you actually have not quite half the responsibility of the employees within that county, but close. Because these other elected offices, they represent about seven hundred of the employees. You represent about six hundred and twenty-five of the employees. They're either your, directly your employees of your office, or ones that are underneath your office. Now, my concern here has to do with particularly the other departments. I don't want to beat up on you, but the other departments, they're all responsible virtually for doing mandates that are required of them. Those mandates do not require them to have this particular space. In other words, we were in a courthouse. Costs were less. We, you, a couple of you Commissioners voted to increase the cost of housing for the county to have to pay by two and a half million dollars a year. You still have obligation to pay for the maintenance of the other by state law. All of these particular departments, they're not responsible for all of the internal costs and the interfund costs involved. They're responsible for general operations and the specific requirements for the, that the state has put upon them. So I'm just gonna encourage you, don't cut anybody short from what their legal obligation is, because you will be forcing them to have to take action to protect themselves so they aren't personally liable for doing it. Thank you.
Anyone else for a public comment? For items? Any item? Okay. That brings us to Commissioners' Community Reports. Commissioner Grant, did you have any, do you have a report you wanted to give?
I'll just do briefly. Over the last, we've only been away from here for a week, so in the last
We froze up. You're, you unfroze, but you were frozen. We didn't catch anything, Commissioner Grant.
Okay, well, yeah, I've got some sort of, I'm on hotel internet, so it's going in and out. I will just say that I attended the opioid council, did some that I attended the opioid council, did some National Association of Counties committees, the Health Steering Committee, the Federal Issues Committee, got to judge the pie contest at the Thurston Conservation District and eat twenty-four pies. And and which thank you, thank you, Commissioner Menzer for suggesting that I try that. It was quite fun. And then attended the Buquota Hurst procession, which was really fun.
All right, you froze up again. We got the gist of it. Go to Commissioner Klaus so I can circle back. Commissioner Grant, anything else?
Thank you. As Commissioner Grant stated, it hasn't been very long. So in the last week, I toured the Franklin Street Harm Reduction Center with Commissioner Grant on Wednesday of last week and we, this was my second time touring. I went to their open house, but now seeing it looking more like lived in and seeing art up on the walls, it was a much different experience from the open house when everything was still brand new and it hadn't been used yet. So we got to see the room where they do like art classes and other groups, and it was just really cool to see all of that kind of coming to fruition. So.
Who runs that facility?
I don't know who runs it. I know that there's a lot of partners who share the space. Our syringe service program is now there. Yeah, so there are a lot of partners involved. Yeah. Let's see. So staff shared that they are seeing a strong growing number of clients stopping by to receive support and services. And the visit also highlighted some of the positive engagement opportunities that provide clients with creative and supportive outlets. So that was a great experience and I thank you, Commissioner Grant, if you can hear me, for attending that tour with me. Next, I attended through M R S E an in-person training all day on October second on the fundamentals of budgeting. So that was a really interesting class. It was a high-level overview of a lot of the things we're talking through now. And it was a great opportunity for me to kind of get that overview. I know we've all been meeting with budget staff incessantly almost, so it was just really nice to kind of have like an outside perspective to give a high-level overview of budgeting in the process. And I also attended yesterday a tour of the fleet services at Public Works and learned about their different operations. I attended with Assistant County Manager Jennifer Walker and it was just a really good opportunity to kind of see what's going on at Public Works and get a deeper look into the different equipment that we have and the vehicles that we operate. I got to see a couple of the sheriff's vehicles torn apart and working on putting the decals on the side. So it was just really interesting to see kind of what goes on behind the scenes and how they manage their inventory. A lot of process improvements. I want to shout out to Bruce for all the process improvements that he shared with me over the last couple of years to make things move more efficiently and get information in the system in a way that kind of allows staff to know exactly what's happening with all of the different aspects of the fleet system. So that was a great opportunity. And that was all.
Thank you. Commissioner here?
Thank you, sir. Besides budget, 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 I had several conversations with representatives from the city of Tomwater and the city of Lacey on the Opioid Debate Council, attended the National Association of Counties Justice and Public Safety Steering Committee, attended Intercity Transit, the National Association of Hispanic County Officials and kind of received reports from different jurisdictions. Commissioner Grant was kind enough to cover Thurston Regional Planning Council for me. Thank you for that. Interbranch Advisory Committee, just as a heads up towards the board, the Administrative Office of the Courts as well as the Supreme Court have indicated that the judicial impact fees will be a priority in their legislative agenda next year. So that was really good news to hear. Attended the Chahalas Tribes Hope and Healing Clinic Tour with Commissioner Menzer and also saw Commissioner Menzer present at the WAC meeting on participating in statewide committees.
Chahalas tour since the last meeting?
Was it? I don't know. I thought so.
Sounds blurry. Yeah, Commissioner Fornier.
This morning I attended an online meeting with Department of Commerce where they given update. They were, so they've done like forty-four community meetings. We had one here. We had, I went to a couple of them here. There's one with the E D C and where they were going around kind of doing listening sessions and they were giving updates on that. It was really good. The the stuff that they were reporting back on, it it really sounded like they were basically just reporting back the things that were said here locally, which tells me that like everybody probably told them the same thing. And so and and then they were reporting back on it. So it really felt like they listened. And they're looking at kind of responding to the feedback. And it was a lot of stuff like making it more accessible to their four hundred different programs, having more like local community support, local support for what they call them rural communities and frontier communities. I thought that sounded kind of cool. I don't know exactly what qualifies to be a frontier community, but I want to find out. I want to explore those. So that was good. It really does sound like the Department of Commerce is is pretty squared away. But they did say that there's not going to be as many resources available as in the past. They did talk a lot about, you know, kind of the stuff that we're struggling with here, where projections are not sunny. Resources are not as readily available as in the past, but they do have programs that are out there that are looking to support economic development. Did an interview with NPR late last week on on the ordinance, the Emergency Responder Protection Act that we are are working on here. I have not heard it yet. I was told that it aired yesterday. Went to new employee orientation with several of the other commissioners and that was a that was a fun fun, fun meeting to go to. There was, there was a lot of it was the normal thing, but it was just, it's always fun to do to welcome new new staff. TCOM Joint Admin and Medic One Board Meeting occurred where we talked about budgets. Attended with Sheriff Sanders's Town Hall in Tenino. It was, it was a good meeting. It was really, I thought it was good to have a town hall, especially after the the big public comment period that we had in here, talking a lot about public safety issues. It was a lot, it was really good to talk more off the cuff with community members. They had a lot of questions about budget. So that was why I offered to go with the sheriff because I figured there'd be a lot of commissioner questions. And there were, and it was good to work on those and and meet the community out there. I was appointed to the Washington State Emergency Management Council. Excited about that, that our first meeting is is this week. And that's a, that's a pretty exciting statewide appointment that I'll, maybe I'll probably share out, share more on with you guys. Share more with you guys on that later. I didn't mean to say the word moron. That's it. I felt that come out. I was like, that wasn't a Freudian slip.
Yeah, it was a short week, but a long week for me. I packed a lot of stuff in. I attended the Wild Links Conference, which is about habitat connectivity at the Great Wolf Lodge. I had to be virtual on Wednesday and in and out, but I was able to go in person on Thursday. Attended the Lacey Maker Space Open House Event. Attended the Black Lake McLean Fire District Open House on Saturday. Thurston Conservation District Harvest Festival, happily not eating pies, but watching Commissioner Grant do that for me. The Olympia Education Foundation had Rise and Shine Breakfast with Lieutenant Governor Heck. The dispute resolution center had an open house on Thursday. On Thursday night, I attended the Olympia High School, Capitol High School Kiwanis Key Club Installation Ceremony, which I thought was going to be just kind of a a short school ceremony. I'd be in and out, but it was actually a whole event with installation of Kiwanis officers and key club officers and speeches and fundraising and dinner and all sorts of things. So that was an unexpected evening I had on Thursday. But it was a good event. I'd never been to that one before.
Pretending.
So, yeah. And let's see, Washington County's Insurance Fund Meeting, we had a special meeting where we selected a new executive director. That position's been open for quite some time. And now we have a new executive director named Chip Taylor, who will be taking over November first. And the WAC panel this yesterday that Commissioner Mihia mentioned, I was asked to speak as to my statewide boards, like Commissioner Fornier just got appointed to one. I'm on several and they wanted to sort of encourage new commissioners to apply and be aware of the process. So we spoke about our experiences on those. And that was, and then Lot, I had a special meeting with the state auditor about the Lot audit and also another special meeting regarding Lot, regarding we're working through the process of hiring a lobbyist and we went through and went down a whole bunch of really good applications down to a few that we're going to interview. So that plus all the budget stuff and new employee application filled my week pretty fully. So much so that I was too exhausted to get to the Nisqually Land Trust event on Sunday, which I signed up for, but didn't make it to. But I'm sure it was awesome. So with that, we have a public hearing in twelve minutes, but we're at the end of the business agenda. Thanks, everybody. We're adjourned. See everybody back at three thirty, which is a public hearing regarding the six-year Transportation Improvement Program. Hey, good afternoon. Welcome to Thurston County Board of County Commissioners' Public Hearing for this Tuesday, October seventh, twenty twenty-five, three thirty-one P M. We're here on the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program for twenty twenty-six to twenty thirty-one. Purpose of this public hearing is to accept and consider public comment on the proposed six-year Transportation Improvement Program or TIP for the calendar years twenty-six to thirty-one. This public hearing is not being livestreamed due to technical issues, but is being recorded on Zoom and there is participation available on Zoom. Zoom recording will be posted to the Thurston County YouTube channel within twenty-four hours of the meeting. This is a hybrid public hearing. Those who have wishing to testify have joined by Zoom, emailed in comment or mailed in comment. If you wish to testify, please visit Thurston County homepage online. Of course, if you're if you're not able to, we're not livestreaming, so that doesn't really apply. So we will have Matt Unzleman or Becky Khan. Becky Khan, Traffic Engineer and Operations Manager, to provide information on the topic. Anyone on Zoom who wishes to testify, you do not need to sign up in any particular way. I will read your name aloud. You'll have three minutes to testify. Time may not be given to another person. When you are called on, please state your name and address for the records. Public hearing is now open. Becky will present background information on the tip and summarize any written comments we have received to date and provide any additional information requested by the board. Good afternoon, Becky.
Good afternoon. I'm Becky Khan. I'm the Traffic Engineering and Operations Manager with Thistone County Public Works. Again, today we're here to formally take public comment on the twenty twenty-six to twenty thirty-one Transportation Improvement Program or the tip. I'm going to briefly go over the different components of the tip and its purpose. So pursuant to R C W thirty-six point eight one point one two one, the board is required to adopt a six-year tip each year. The tip is a planning document which guides transportation improvements in the county for the next six years. Once adopted, the tip satisfies the legislative requirements for transportation growth management and for the distribution of state and federal transportation dollars. This public hearing is the last step in the process before the adoption of the tip by resolution as part of the budget adoption process in December. The tip is made up of eight different chapters. I'm going to go through each individually real fast. Chapter one lists all the R C Ws and WACs we satisfy by developing and adopting the tip each year. Chapter two goes through the different funding sources Public Works utilizes to fund its transportation programs and projects. Chapter three gives an overview of the transportation-related revenues and expenditures, including a report on the previous year's transportation impact fees and goes through the road fund forecasts for the next six years. Chapter four reviews the eight different transportation programs that projects are prioritized through in the development of the tip. Chapter five lists the planned transportation projects that will have funding on them in twenty twenty-six. This list is referred to as our annual construction program or annual road program. Chapter six lists the prioritized transportation projects that are reasonably expected to be funded over the next six-year period, twenty twenty-six to twenty thirty-one. This is really where the main part of the tip is. This table gives an overview of each project, including funding sources, the timeline and specific project information. And it's a great spot to go if you ever have any questions about a specific project. Oops. Chapter seven is the twenty-year transportation capacity project list. This list serves as the basis for the transportation impact fees that we collect from developers. The capacity projects that are included in the previous chapter, the six-year list, are derived from this list. And chapter eight, the final chapter, is the twenty twenty-four Annual Bridge Report. Inclusion of this chapter in the tip satisfies specific WAC requirements that a written report of bridge findings be submitted to the legislative body concerning the county's annual bridge inspection efforts. A list of all one hundred and forty-five bridges that the county is responsible for inspecting is included. Finally, I just want to briefly summarize the changes to the tip from last year. Three projects were adjusted or renamed. Seven projects were removed from the list, either because they were completed, completed construction, or are no longer prioritized. And three projects were added. I think there's a couple of emergency projects and just a new upcoming project. I'd be happy to take any questions. We did not, we received one public comment this to myself and it was regarding pedestrian and bicycle projects within the tip.
Rebecca? Being in hearing nine, we can move to public testimony. There is no one in the room. And do we have anyone online? See staff, staff, staff.
I don't know who Susan is.
Susan Bito?
Yes, it's actually pronounced Bido, but yeah, thank you for recognizing me. I don't have any questions right now.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bito. That's it then. You don't have any public comment? So is there a motion to close the public hearing? I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion to close second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. And there's no proposed action. We're good to go. All right, thanks, everybody. Watch this. Public hearing is closed.
She's done that. Was it Philbert? Wouldn't they just read the book for like hours and hours and hours? Is that what I thought? The Philbert?
Yeah.